Okay. Welcome to the regular council meeting of Tuesday, May the seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two at four P M. We acknowledge that the town of Kirkland Lake is located in traditional territories of the Cree and Algonquin peoples and other indigenous peoples, whose presence continue to enrich our vibrant community today. We recognize and offer our gratitude for their care and teachings about the earth and the culture. We honor these teachings through our interactions today and every day hereafter. We thank them for sharing this land with us. We commit to ongoing learnings about how cultural identity is celebrated, represented and honored, as well as the inclusion of indigenous perspectives through action. Make a wish. Thank you. Meeting called to order, and we'll have a moment of silence. Approval of the agenda?
Moved by councillor Eugene Ivanoff, seconded by councillor Casey Owens. Bid resolved that the agenda for the regular meeting of council held on May seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two be approved as circulated.
All in favor? Motion carried. Declaration of pecuniary interest. None noted. Petitions and delegations. None noted. Acceptance of minutes and recommendations.
Thank you, your worship. There are two motions. So we'll start with the first one. Moved by councillor Lad Shaba, seconded by councillor Stacey White. Bid resolved that council approve the following. Minutes of the Kirkland Lake Economic Development Committee held January twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-two. Minutes of the regular meeting of council held May third, two thousand and twenty-two. And minutes of the special meeting of council held May fifth, two thousand and twenty-two.
All in favor? Motion carried.
Moved by councillor Eugene Ivanoff, seconded by councillor Stacey White. Bid resolved that council receive the following. Minutes of the regular meeting of the Kirkland Lake Police Services Board held October thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. And minutes of the special meeting of the Kirkland Lake Police Services Board held March twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-two.
All in favor? Motion carried. Reports of municipal officers and communication officers and communications, six point one, supply, delivery, installation. Ms. Sackrider?
Thank you, your worship. Through you to council. You may remember back in March, I gave a presentation to council in regards to money that we were receiving from the Ontario Trillium Foundation. This is a hundred percent funded money that's given to the municipality, and it's for upgrades of sport and recreation facilities. And some of the areas they're looking at are different things that we can do to enhance longevity of an existing building and to provide accessibility options. So a number of items went into this grant. It's over four hundred thousand dollars that we are receiving. And this is the first aspect that we're bringing back to council. So this is for the replacement of the arena boards. The RFP went out. We only had one bid. It is from, we reached out to every organization in the province that we need to do this type of work. It's very interesting. There's been a lot of funding happening this year, and everybody swamped. So we did receive one bid. It is with an organization we have done work with in the past. We're happy with the bid. It came in under what we had allocated within the grant for this work. They are available to have the work done this summer, so we will be able to not have to prolong the summer season and not allow the ice to go in early. We'll be able to put in at the same time as what we planned for by the end of August. So you'll see a couple of different items. It is the repair and replacer, sorry, the replacement of all of the arena board. They will reuse the existing glass wherever possible. It also includes reviewing the ads. So the ads is a fundraiser for our local gold miner team, so the ads will be either reused or if they have too much damage on them, we'll be able to have them replaced. And with a, a different type of, it's more of a different type of covering to it that's thinner and will cause less ability to have your stick get caught in between the ads. So that's a good move there. And they're also going to take out all of the existing glass that we have, store it on site, and then put everything back. So they're planning to start middle of July. The reason we bring this back to council is the dollar value of it. So with our bylaw, anything over a hundred thousand dollar threshold is to be approved by council. We did include in the RFP extension of the boards. That has been something that has been a bit of interest. We did meet with our gold miner group about the extension of the boards. They said it is a nice to have, not a must have, but we thought we would add it in there. They were unable to bid on that because it's not part of the work that they do. We still have enough money to include that work. We're just waiting for some of the other bids on the other things to come in to make sure something else that is maybe a higher priority doesn't come in over the amount that we have. So the goal is, is to get all of those final quotes in very soon and get started on all of it.
Councillor Owen?
Yes. Bonnie, when you said extension of boards, I assumed you meant an extension of the players' benches?
Thank you. Yes, that's exactly what I meant.
As a long, long-term hockey coach, I would much rather see the problems caused by the current benches fixed long before the advertising is fixed. There is more than one group that uses the complex. And the group that that congestion affects the most is Kirkland Lake Miner Hockey. And now that I have grandchildren playing hockey, I'm back at the arena again. Not happy, but wow, I shouldn't say that. I am back at the arena, and it's taken me right back to when my kids were young. And that congestion caused there with the young ones, who are having a hard time just dealing with stairs, is very bad. I think we have to remember that we have more than one user group there, and we have to make that a priority. That's going to improve service like we're supposed to be doing to the community. Making advertising more readable is not exactly improving service. Although I do understand what you're saying about getting the stuff. That that is, that is a problem. Now, the new advertising system. So is there an opportunity that we're gonna? Sorry, Bonnie, after all that, I didn't even ask the question. Is there an opportunity after this that we're going to revisit that and potentially see the benches extended?
Through you, your worship, absolutely. That is still part of the project.
Okay.
It's just that this particular group weren't able to bid on it. We put it in that RFP hoping they could. They weren't able to. So I'm just trying to be cautious to ensure that something like a dehumidifier doesn't go higher in price than what we advocated. We're trying to get all our prices in, make sure we still have enough room in the entire project, and we will do the bench project. Yeah, the bench project.
To the best of your knowledge, right now, we still haven't money to do that.
Absolutely.
Okay. Um. You threw me off. Anyways, no, I just, I just wanted to make sure that that's, because to me, that has been a bad design from day one. The person who designed that ice pad section of the complex was not a hockey player. I'm sorry, because no one in their right mind would ever design that way, where the stairs are part of the bench. And I was, I was coaching, and I had players coming up there, standing in the hallway, waiting to get on the ice, harassing my players while I'm trying to coach. I had times when I could not open the door to let my players off the ice because players were going downstairs to the dressing rooms. So to me, that's a major area, and I'm glad to see it hasn't been forgotten.
Thank you. Any other comments? Oh, Bonnie, I will say it will be very nice to see that glass coming down. A lot of it has been bounced around and it's, it's passed us like, that's good news.
Your worship, I believe I seen councillor Shaba had his hand up.
Councillor Shaba? No, I'm good. I'm good. My question has to do with the, the outdoor, the advertising board, but that's not what's, what we're talking about here. So I'm okay. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Any further comments? We have a recommendation.
Moved by councillor Casey Owens, seconded by councillor Stacey White. It resolved that memorandum number two thousand and twenty-two C S zero zero eight entitled "Supply, Delivery and Installation of Indoor Arena Dashboards at the Joe Maverick Community Complex Arena", request for proposal number five seven seven twenty-two RFP be received, and that council approve the award of a contract to Sound Barriers, a division of one four six six one four seven Ontario Inc. for the supply, delivery and installation of indoor arena dashboard at the Joe Maverick Community Complex Arena in the amount of a hundred and sixty thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars, being drawn from the Community Building Fund capital stream offered by the Ontario Trillium Foundation, O T F. And finally, that an execution bylaw be presented for three readings on May seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two, authorizing the mayor and municipal clerk to enter into an agreement on behalf of the corporation of the town of Kirkland Lake with Sound Barriers, a division of one four six six one four seven Ontario Inc. for the supply, delivery and installation of indoor arena dashboard, boards at the Joe Maverick Community Complex Arena.
All in favor? Motion carried. Item six point two, review of corporate policies. Mr. Carter.
Thank you, your worship, and through you to council. Yes, we have three policies here. They were viewed in two thousand and twenty. At that time, you remember, he went through quite a few of the policies just to see what may have been in place. The three policies in question were, remained in place. Since then, since then, the town has dealt with a few tougher H R matters, and at times, a lawyer was brought in, the legal counsel, in direction. In two thousand and twenty-one and twenty-two, Wisher Law provided the town advice on a few H R issues. At that time, they identified several recommended changes in each of the policies. In addition, it appears each policy was constructed individually. So when Wisher looked over the three policies, there was some conflicting language between them. In this case, because of what was identified, we actually sent all three policies to Wisher for a full policy review. They did provide us back the three policies with the changes. The policies were then reviewed by H R, senior management and the C A O. Several updates remain to the policies that are attachments on three. These updates should provide better policy and guidance going forward.
Any questions or comments? Councillor Owen?
Um, number five. Outside employment. Employee must obtain express permission from their department head before engaging in outside work opportunity. The department head will seek approval from chief minister, officer where appropriate. I'm not sure. That seems to me to be an overreach. For instance, if I'm working as payroll clerk, but I have a talent as a photographer, and I want to open my own photography business outside, why do I need to ask permission to do that? It's it seems like an overreach. And in terms of conflicts, that's covered in the policy as you read on about potential conflicts with, with town employment. So I'm not, to me, it seems like there's an employer overreach. There are some departments within the town where it's quite common for the employees to have their own business or set them job. So I, I mean, it's not a make it a right thing. It's just a concern I have. I think it's an overreach. And then when we get to section seven, fraud and other similar irregularities, and we go down to number F. Unauthorized use or misuse of the corporation's property, equipment, vehicles, materials or records. Do we have a written policy discerning the use of town-owned vehicles? And are the employees aware of that policy?
Councillor Owen, I'm not aware of that policy at this point. Break forward.
I'm hoping we have a written policy, because if we don't, then we're going to need one. We need to define how and when. We have, we have employees that are on call, and there should be very specific rules and regulations on how they use the town vehicle. We're not here to supply them with second-hand equipment.
Thank you. Councillor White?
It was a previous policy in place, but it's
Who used, worship? I believe there, we do have a policy. It rings a bell. I couldn't say you would, I'd have to do the research on that, but we may have something, might be all. I would have to do this investigation.
Yeah, my concern is that we have a policy and it's up to date and, and enforceable. So not, it's not a rush issue. Mr. Smith, it's one of those things when down the road, when things are a little slower, if you could take a look at it, I appreciate it. But it's not, it's got to be done right away.
Councillor White?
So the second issue with previous policy as mentioned is we did a mass repeal of many of our bylaws and our policies when we were upgrading, and that may not have been what it may be.
Your worship, councillor Shaba has his hand up.
Councillor Shaba?
Uh, yeah, I also read this, and I'm a little bit worried about number five, outside employment. But I do want a clarification with respect to us councillors, because we are also categorized as employees. So I would take it that we are somewhat excluded from this provision of outside employment. And number two is, I, I think it's always good for employees to be able to do what they love outside the, the regular employment. Maybe we can add, you know, shall not be unreasonably denied. That way, everybody will know that you have to make your case if you really want to engage in outside employment, but cannot be unreasonably denied. So can you address those two, please?
Your worship, I can answer a part of that question for councillor Shaba.
Go ahead.
Um, through you to councillor Shaba, members of council are not employees. The only employee of the corporation is the mayor. However, the code of conduct applies to council, not these policies. So that's, that's the number one confirmation, and I'll pass it over to the director of corporate services to complete the, the question.
Yeah, we can, we can take it back. When, when we were going through the policies with Wisher, there was quite a few different spots where they said there should be a separate policy for we haven't had time to get those together.
Any further comments? Councillor Adams?
Yeah, when I, when I read this, I, I'm wondering if the, the intent, when it says outside employment, it says no employee may arrange an outside work whether as an employee, any kind of contractor, partner, otherwise which creates an actual potential of perceived conflict. And that makes full sense. And if you're looking for a job outside of the town of Kirkland Lake where it interferes with the performance of the employees' employment duties for the corporation, where there's advantages derived from the employment of the corporation, where it's likely to influence or affect carrying out the employees' duties to the corporation, that makes full sense to me. So I don't, you know, I, that caveat in there, I'm not sure how this, whether this is the intent when it says outside employment. I think when you throw in the rest of it, it does make sense. It does make sense if you're saying, you know, you can't look for a job outside as a, you know, doing anything else like councillor Owens as the, you know, as a photographer when you're, when you're working in whatever finance or something. But it does make sense when you throw the rest of that policy in there. So I'm thinking that there really isn't an issue with the, with the policy itself. It's just the, if you read it, only read the first paragraph, it does have that connotation, but I think when you put the whole thing in together, it does make a lot of sense.
Thank you. Councillor Owen?
Yeah, I agree. Then why have the first paragraph at all? Like, no employee may engage in outside work with as an employee, blah, blah, blah. That's, that's what we're after. It's, it's not a conflict or not an interference with their ability to do the day-to-day job. When we say that they must get their department heads permission to start their own business or take an outside job, that's overstepping. The second paragraph is what we're after. Like, why not just delete the whole first paragraph and go from there?
I tend to agree. We can't direct somebody not to do part-time work on the days of. Councillor White?
Just the way that I read it, it's, it's better to err on the side of caution because it becomes a judgment. I might not see my secondary employment as in conflict with my job, but it may very well be. So if you take out individual in this and have it at director and C A O level, then it would possibly go through the lawyers, et cetera, et cetera, and make sure all of offices are checked off so that everything is owning up enough. I see value in this as Eugene does, and I think it should stand the way it's here.
Your worship, councillor Adams has his hand up.
Councillor Adams?
Uh, yeah, I'm in agreements with councillor Eugene and councillor White. These are full-time lawyers whose career, and they've seen many court cases, and have dealt with employment law. And I'm pretty sure they know what words to choose based on cases that they've dealt with already, so I think it can stand.
Thank you. Any further comments? Jim?
Your worship, moved by councillor Stacey White, seconded by councillor Lad Shaba. Bid resolved that memorandum number two thousand and twenty-two H R zero zero two entitled "Review of Corporate Policies, Code of Ethics, Code of Discipline and Violence and Harassment in the Workplace Policies" be received, and that council hereby approve the updates to the Code of Ethics, Code of Discipline and Violence and Harassment in the Workplace, Workplace Policies, and that Corp. two thousand and twenty zero zero five Code of Discipline, Corporate Policy Corp. two thousand and twenty oh oh six Code of Ethics and Equal Opportunity Program, and H S two thousand and twenty twenty-nine Violence and Harassment be repealed. And finally, that Corp. two thousand and twenty-two zero zero two Code of Ethics Policy, Corp. two thousand and twenty-two zero zero three Code of Discipline Corporate Policy, and Corp. two thousand and twenty-two oh oh four Violence and Harassment in the Workplace Policy be inserted into the corporate policy manual.
All in favor? Motion carried. Reports and of minis, oh, sorry. Opposed, sorry. Six four one, opposed. Motion carried. Reports of municipal officers and communications. Item six point one, supply, delivery. I believe that's.
Your, your worship, we're at item six point three.
Sorry. My slip up. Item six point three. Kirkland Lake Aquatic Club community grant application.
Thank you, your worship. Back in two thousand and twenty, council passed the community grants policy. It's essentially a policy that was brought in to establish the rules for financial and both dollar and non-dollar and in-kind sports and community groups, old events, better themselves, bring activities to the community. The program is budgeted at twenty-five thousand dollars, an economic development program. And each application that is received is usually, well, will not exceed five thousand dollars. We have an application that came forward to the Economic Development Committee from Kirkland Lake Aquatica Club. They were asking for non-dollar contribution. It's a waiver of pool fees associated with the events of the mission pool over closing twenty-two. It tallies three thousand four hundred and forty-six dollars and five cents. It was a well-discussed at the committee, and committee brought forward a recommendation to council to approve the application.
Any questions or concerns? We have a motion.
To your worship, moved by councillor Patrick Adams, seconded by councillor Lad Shaba. Bid resolved that report number two thousand and twenty-two D E V sixteen entitled Kirkland Lake Aquatic Club Community Case K L A C Grant Application be received, and that council approves a request from K L A C for a non-dollar contribution to a maximum of three thousand four hundred and forty-six dollars and ninety-five cents to offset pool fees associated with three planned competitive meets as outlined in their application. And finally, that the waiver of pool fees for each event be applied at the time of the event and be contingent upon the event being held.
All in favor? Motion carried. Item six point four, two thousand and twenty-two final budget update. Sean?
Thank you, worship, and through you to council. It does say Lloyd Cropper on the top. Our treasurer's been off for a week, just back today, so I didn't put the report forward. Just wanted to go through, the budget was tabled at the regular meeting, council Tuesday, May third. Deliberations took place May fifth. Council instructed the treasurer to bring the budget with two percent tax levy increase for approval to regular meeting this week. There have been a couple of changes since, since the meeting, and I just wanted to go through the two of them so that everyone's so it's transparent. The first is the actual tax levy amount of two percent, which is calculated at the May fifth meeting, eleven million seventy-nine thousand. Used internal spreadsheets. And fortunately, this was a little bit off. We then went into our, it's a online system we use that's hooked to MPAC called Opta. And the two percent levy was actually eleven million thirty-nine thousand, so a little bit different than what we presented. The reduction in the tax levy of thirty-nine thousand five sixty-three was added to the transport reserves amount of nine hundred and thirty-five thousand. You'll see that on the last page of the operating. It's now nine hundred and seventy-five thousand four hundred and eighty-nine thousand. So you can look at Schedule A, you'll see the change there. The second change was a revival from a comfort station on our capital budget. When, when received, the full details told a hundred and sixty-two thousand versus ninety-one thousand five hundred. That was originally projected. The Comfort Station project is funded by Water and Waste Water Reserve Fund. So it actually didn't hit the, the tax levy. We'll increase the amount of reserves reduced for that project. Also see that in two thousand and twenty-two. Also see that at 2022 capital budget Schedule B. The bylaw twenty-two oh four zero. So just wanted to bring those two to your attention, if there may, a little bit of change. In summary, the tax levy increase will remain at two percent, but because of this change, the transport will somewhat. Projections for the Town Kirkland Lake Reserves for 2022 will be brought forward out of future. I also have one more, just to mention, if you did go through what was presented on the agenda, there was a, the last page of the operating budget, just printed out off one of our spreadsheets. It wasn't supposed to be in there. It was a, it was a initial capital budget spreadsheet, and it showed 2022 and all that kind of, or sorry, it showed 2021 projects on there. It just wasn't supposed to break out. We ended up, you know, running out of time, and we can't find a test to look it over. So it will be taken out when the budget is through. And I just wanted to bring that to your attention. The, the schedule B with the actual 2022 capital budget is, is still in place. So that's all we had to bring forward to. Got any questions?
You have any questions or comments, counsel?
Your worship, Counselor Adams has his hand up.
Counselor Adams?
Yeah, excellent job. Once again, as I said at the first meeting, bringing this all forward instead of the classic eighteen percent, fourteen percent's being brought forward. That brought it forward at two percent is well done. Um, we do have a healthy level amount of reserves, and I do apologize for not making the last meeting due to career commitments. But being a part of the D S A board, where we do sit on decent reserves, and I've chipped away at those very heavily. I know it might delay the process, but is it a possible option to know what a zero percent levy increase? While people are facing levy, I mean, inflation of their own and gas prices above two dollars up here. I've just seen like these times of need, if there's a zero percent option that can get further into the reserves, if not.
Your worship. Yes, I mean, this will be brought back, the change is made. Bring it back on, seven, seven meeting.
Counselor Owen?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not in favor of zero percent. We all saw what happened when we first got elected in the previous councils. Had run zero percent for eleven or twelve years. There was no reserves left. And we've had to start rebuilding the reserves square one. Trust me, no one knows better than myself, the gas is over two dollars a liter. No one knows better than myself how much the grocery bills have gone up. I don't have the extra money to recommend a tax increase. But at the same time, I'm sitting at a council table where I'm supposed to be making recommendations or suggestions that will be for the best interest of the entire community. And when I drive around on the roads and I see how bad they are, it's a total and utter embarrassment. We need to continue building up our reserves so that we can start to tackle these projects. To tackle these projects, we have to take a new approach. We have to look at not putting in curbs and gutters. Redoing the base, so the roads will be protected somewhat from the frost heat. Redoing the surface and not spending the extra money on the curbs and gutters. I'm also a walker. I walk a lot. And the sidewalks in this town are just as bad in many places as the roads. Again, that's what zero percent for ten or eleven years gets you, because you've used up all your reserves. You have nothing in the bank for essential services. You're not talking optional services. We're talking essential services. So I, to come in at two percent when the inflation rate is at seven percent, yeah, I'm not happy about having to pay more. But I think that's a pretty good deal. And I'd like to see it through that. Thank you.
Any other comments? I, I, Counselor, I don't know.
Yeah, I have the same feeling. We can't keep on going zero because it, it, that's not, not possible, especially in a six percent, seven percent, whatever it is this year. You know what, I think, uh, two percent, I think everybody's done the admirable job in handling their budget and keeping it as low as possible. We just are going up. As Counsel Adams mentioned, gas prices are going up, and our gas is no cheaper than anybody else's. Uh, we've run a lot of vehicles. I mean, it just goes on and on and on. So I'm sure we're affected in the same fashion at the town of Kirkland Lake as people are with their, with their personal budget. So, thank you.
Yeah, just I may comment, based on similar budgets in Northern Ontario municipalities, our two percent looks pretty good. It's probably, I think, the best of, of the group. So I'm in favor of the two percent as well.
Your worship, Counselor Shaba has his hand up.
Counselor Shaba?
Yeah, I'm also in favor of two percent. I think the staff, they've worked their very best to bring this forward to us. Uh, you may recall last year, guys, last budget, it was not zero percent. Uh, we actually give people a break in the, their taxes. So, uh, to go two percent this year, uh, I, I think is fair, and that will really allow us to have some money in the reserve and then some money to use for infrastructure and things that we need to do to get the municipality moving. So I'm in favor of the two percent as presented. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments? None noted. We have a motion.
As we do your worship, moved by Counsel Patrick Adams, seconded by Counsel Rick Owen. Be resolved that memorandum number 2022 Fin zero zero seven entitled 2022 Final Budget Update be received. And finally, that the appropriate bylaws relating to the 2022 budget be presented to council for three readings at the May seventeenth, 2022 regular meeting of council.
All in favor? Motion carried.
That was one opposed.
Oh, sorry.
Okay.
Six in favor, one opposed. Motion carried. Consideration of notices of motion.
Your worship, I, I apologize for the interruption. Counsel Shaba has his hand up.
I just have a procedural question. How can the mover oppose the motion?
Uh, your worship, through you to Counsel Shaba, a member of council can move or second a motion to table the motion. They can vote in favor or not, or against. It doesn't matter.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Motion carried. Introduction reading and consideration of bylaws. Eight point one bylaw, twenty-two dash oh three seven.
Moved by Counsel Rick Owen, seconded by Counsel Patrick Adams. Be resolved that the following bylaw be ready first, second, and third time, numbered, passed, signed by the mayor and clerk, and the seal of the corporation be affixed there too. Bylaw number twenty-two thirty-seven being a bylaw to authorize the execution of an agreement between Cloud Permit Inc. and the Corporation of the Town of Kirkland Lake for e-permitting services.
All in favor? Motion carried.
Your worship, do you want me to carry on?
Yes.
Okay. Moved by Counsel Casey Owen, seconded by Counsel Stacy White. Be resolved that the following bylaw be ready first, second, and third time, numbered, passed, signed by the mayor and clerk, and the seal of the corporation be affixed there too. Bylaw number twenty-two thirty-eight being a bylaw to authorize the execution of an agreement between Sound Barriers, Division of one four six six one four seven, Ontario Inc. and the Corporation of the Town of Kirkland Lake for the supply, delivery, and installation of indoor arena dashboard boards at the Joe Mavernak Community Complex Arena.
All in favor? Motion carried.
Moved by Counsel Rick Owen, seconded by Counsel Eugene Ivanoff. Be resolved that the following bylaw be ready first, second, and third time, numbered, passed, signed by the mayor and clerk, and the seal of the corporation be affixed there too. Bylaw number twenty-two thirty-nine being a bylaw to set tax ratios for municipal purposes for the year 2022.
All in favor? Motion carried.
Moved by Counsel Rick Owen, seconded by Counsel Lad Shaba. Be resolved that the following bylaw be read at first, second, and third time, numbered, passed, signed by the mayor and clerk, and the seal of the corporation be affixed there too. Bylaw number twenty-two forty, being a bylaw to adopt the 2022 municipal budget.
All in favor? Opposed? None noted. Six. Motion carried.
Moved by Counsel Eugene Ivanoff, seconded by Counsel Stacy White. Be resolved that the following bylaw be read at first, second, and third time, numbered, passed, signed by the mayor and clerk, and the seal of the corporation be affixed there too. Bylaw number twenty-two forty-one being a bylaw to adopt the estimates of all sums required during the year and to strike the rates of taxation for the year 2022.
All in favor? One opposed? None noted?
There's one noted, your worship. The vote is carried. Sorry, I'm just confirming.
Carried.
Moved by Counsel Stacy White, seconded by Counsel Patrick Adams. Be resolved that the following bylaw be read a first, second, and third time, numbered, passed, signed by the mayor and clerk, and the seal of the corporation be affixed there too. Bylaw number twenty-two forty-two being a bylaw to set the municipal water and wastewater rates for 2022.
All in favor? Opposed? None noted? Motion carried. Counselor Owen?
Yeah, if I can just verify that. Water rates and wastewater have to be self-sustaining. They have to fund themselves. We cannot use money from the tax levy. And that's why you'll see increases like we see, because we have to pay for, out of what we take in. It's a service fee.
Thank you.
Your worship, I just want to confirm that the vote was carried.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Questions from council to staff? None noted? Notices of motion? None noted? Counselors' reports?
Your worship, Counsel Shaba has his hand up.
Counselor Shaba?
Okay, thank you very much, your worship. Uh, this is a verbal report uh, from the Phenom Conference that took place May ninth to the eleventh. Uh, I was in attendance along with the, your worship and the CEO. So a three-day conference, we had delegates from small and big municipality across North Eastern Ontario. Uh, some even took the train to the event. Uh, mostly some from the, at the northern delegates. We also had keynote, a lot of speakers. Uh, the keynote speaker spoke about thirteen ways to kill your community. Uh, and what stood out to me is the fact that in a community, we have to be really welcoming to new people and to new businesses. And if we don't do that, well, that would be one of the ways to kill a community. And we had another speaker, uh, I think he spoke about cultural mindfulness. His name is George Kuchi from Red Tail Hub Training. Uh, my suggestion to the CEO is, is that if there's a need to have a sensitivity training in future, uh, this might be one of the speakers that, that you could potentially invite. He was very articulate and very much took us through some of the indigenous cultures uh, and all the other interests and stuff. Uh, on day two, we got updates from all the North Eastern Ontario institutions. Uh, first for the O N T C, Karina Moore, the chair, spoke about what's been, what's going on to O N T C. Well, they are very, we are very upbeat about the return of the passenger train, if it does happen. And one striking moment to me, again, this is what everybody's facing, uh, was the fact that Ontario Northland is now looking for, they have a lot of vacant positions for skilled uh, positions. So this is, uh, this is astonishing, especially we have young people. And then we have colleges here that should be responding to their needs, but, but they ask us to essentially let people know in our community that Ontario Northland is hiring. Uh, and we also heard from Dr. Sarita Verma. Uh, Dr. Verma, she happens to be the, the president of North, the Northsome, Northern Ontario School of Medicine. She gave us an update on what's happening with the School of Medicine. Of interest, of course, is the fact that the School of Medicine is now stand, standalone from Laurentian University. You're all aware of the financial debacle of Laurentian University. She was very excited about the standalone status and also very excited about the funding for additional seats for five years. So, uh, lastly, we heard from, uh, uh, M P A. So, uh, M P A went through some of the systems they've had in place. Uh, most notably, uh, the need to at least try to get back to people on time. I, 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 I know in the past, we have friends that built, built their houses and they didn't get any certain for three years after that. So I guess they would do a lot to, uh, make things a lot faster. And then this, uh, uh, this software too came up to cloud permit. Uh, I wasn't aware of that. Probably this, Jim, you probably told us that. Uh, I guess that was M P A, they went through all the different organized, different companies, software providers. And this is the best one that they came up with, and that's what I believe that some of the municipalities are encouraged uh, to subscribe to, and I'm very glad that we're a part of it. So all in all, uh, it was a very good conference. We had Northern Leaders Debate, the first that I'm aware of, whereby the leaders of the four major parties spoke about northern issues. Uh, that was a, a lot of conversation, well, shall we say, about nothing. Everybody stuck to the script, uh, and that's all there is to it. So that's it for my report, and I encourage every, everyone of us in future, if you have the opportunity to attend Phenom for you, uh, we'll get a chance to meet, uh, old and new friends and get a chance to meet some of the people that run the northern institutions. And I did get a chance to introduce our new CEO to, uh, the, uh, Karina Moore, the president of Ontario Northland. So hopefully, uh, we can get this happening on that front. So we can get the train station back in Swastika. Thank you very much. That's it.
Thank you, Counselor Shaba. Any other reports? None noted?
Your worship. Yes. Moved by Counsel Lad Shaba, seconded by Counsel, oh, sorry, is there somebody else? No, okay, sorry. I must have had reverberation and, uh, moved by Counsel Lad Shaba, seconded by Counsel Patrick Adams, be resolved that the verbal updates from the members of council be received.
All in favor? Motion carried. We have no closed session. Matters to discuss and close. Confirmation bylaw?
Moved by Counsel Eugene Ivanoff, seconded by Counsel Rick Owen. Be resolved that the following bylaw be ready first, second, and third time, numbered, passed, signed by the mayor and clerk, and the seal of the corporation be affixed there too. Bylaw number twenty-two forty-three being a. Bylaw number twenty-two forty-three being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council at its special meeting held May fifth, twenty twenty-two, and its regular meeting held on May seventeenth, twenty twenty-two.
All in favor? Motion carried.
Moved by councillor Rick Owen, seconded by councillor Casey Owens. Be resolved that this regular meeting of council do adjourn at five thirty-one P M.
All in favor? Motion carried.
Good night, everyone.
Jim?
You're welcome.